Makeup day stuff?
Yes.
Okay, so we have makeup days for January 24th and February 1st, which were snow days that both staff and students missed that need to be made up. So the next dates on the calendar for those makeup days are March 8th and May 24th. So I'm going to propose that both of those days be made up by students and staff. As on the previous this calendar, we marked as makeup days. So then that then moved some of the staff work days that were built into the calendar. We had a staff work day that we moved last time to the March 8th date. But now that that will be a student makeup day, we need to move that staff work day to May 28th, which will have staff coming back after Memorial Day. And then there's a half staff work day that was on May 24th, which is now students' last day of school, that will be moved to May 29th. So teachers and staff will need to come back the 28th and half a day on the 21st to get all of their contracted work pays in. There were two flex PD days on the calendar as well. There was one on February the 18th and March 8th. After having a conversation with Amy Owens, we still have to have those on the calendar. They're flexible. A lot of our staff at that point already had their flex days. I would like to propose that those get moved to June 3rd and 4th. That gives us some flexibility in case there are a few more snow days. We might not have to move them again. It gives those two days built in that are required by the state as well.
Those days are 99% of our staff. Because they would already have their PD days.
So this will get us prior to Memorial Day out of school if Mother Nature will cooperate.
Yes.
And in fact, it could play out ideally if Mother Nature cooperates because that's the Friday.
Yes.
And historically then, we could maybe in a month after we get through some of the rest of the potential bad weather, maybe start talking about a graduation day.
So we're not setting graduation dates yet.
No.
No.
No, I think we need to get through possibly March.
Yeah.
I got you.
Okay, we will need a vote on that. So I need a motion to recommend the recommendations that have been brought before us for makeup days.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Ms. Breeding made the motion. Second?
I'm second.
Okay.
But I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mr. Dickerson, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Now to our snow day 2019-2020 calendar update.
So as we have been living this and going through the snow days as a staff, we really have been kind of looking at what other districts are doing and thinking about what is best to put people first and be dedicated to our community. And we looked at a couple of districts that are the same day that they call a snow day, they are also announcing the makeup day for that snow day. They're not having to wait and go to the board and get it approved. They're allowed to write then let families know that, hey, since we missed this date, your kid is immediately going to come to school on this day. So what I would like it to do is to look at moving for next year's calendar, the dates that we have to make up. So if you'll look at like the 6th, I'm sorry, the 17th of February and March 16th. I have a 1 by the 17th, a 2 by the 16th of March. And then for the makeup days that follow in May, those are numbered as well. And then Carly, if you'll scroll down a little bit more, if you're going to the language right there. So we would put a note on the calendar that said, missed school days will be made up in the following quarter. And then they're listed on there. And so when the first snow day comes up, we can say, "Snow day." And now the makeup day will be February 17th. We would not have to come back and run the board, have parents and students wait. Families could have plenty of time to adjust their plans, have a better idea of when the school will be out. Because we're really following the pattern of the calendar as we are this year, but we're still having to pause and wait. Not being able to communicate that to families, it's early on. We've removed it through the working board session. So this will just allow flexibility and allow better communication with our families.
See, we used to do that in our calendar. We used.
To do that. Makes sense to me.
It's a lot more sense. Well, keeps us from having to do this.
Yes.
When we're going to make up school, well, we have to vote on our way to do what I like.
This also projects the backpack days that we committed to. So just allows us to decide these are the days that we've made up in that.
Yeah, that makes sense. We'll look to pass it at the board meeting.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Okay, next, we have Mr. Hammond. Amy and John Hammond, Farm Credit donations.
So.
Well, he don't look like Amy, but that's no fun.
This is John Martin.
There's seats for me, so I'll be back here in case you have any questions.
Okay.
I think to acquaint you guys with the startage, if you think about the conversations we've had around community sense and rethinking experiences for students and thinking about the nature of community partnership, the work that's going on with the Land Lab is probably as progressive, as progressing in that direction as anything we have going on. So this is something that's really exciting opportunity for us to learn about as a team because they continue to build a vision out that is about students and rethinking the way we do school and community partnership.
Yeah, thanks for setting that context. I think it's, for us, what we saw was an opportunity. We know that the space that we have out of Thomas Nelson was something that we could utilize. So we kind of took on a couple of years ago, just really using the row crop land that we had leased out and having farmers come in and actually plant that for us. But we wanted to take a step further. We wanted to allow students opportunity and an opportunity to essentially just, you know, have their own projects on school property, be able to learn about agriculture in a very hands-on way and utilize their time effectively. With this, we've really made a push this year to really build some big programs. And I think that you'll see the work of my students that have been a part of the planning process and visioning kind of reflected in this. And so we kind of set a mission in place to develop a comprehensive learning system, promotes agriculture awareness and appreciation through application of student-led, hands-on projects. And so, you know, you see there Ben Hite, you know, raising a sweet cornfield. And that was just something that he had the initiative to do over the summer. And that's the kind of thing we're talking about, is building projects and opportunities for students that, you know, like Ben or other students that may not have the opportunity to or space to do so at their own home. And so we set some goals in place that we, you know, these are very lofty goals. I mean, as we read into them a little bit, but I think that we're kind of moving in the right direction. I think that we're getting to the point that, you know, we're being very purposeful of what we're trying to do and making an impact for our students. But this is kind of just showing our, the school property there. Currently, we are using the row crop land. This year, we had soybeans. We did a fall festival to where we had the community out to showcase agriculture in our community. That all happened in fact here in this area, and we had students showcasing their projects there. So there's quite a few different things that are, you know, reflected here. Some of them aren't, you know, haven't happened yet, but in the grant, you know, process, we've applied for things. And that's kind of what I'm coming to you today for, to talk about that. We do have two goats and a donkey. That's actually, it sounds funny to say. But, yeah. Bonnie, Lily, and General Tom. So, yeah, so they live in this area here around the pond that's already fenced in. And, you know, it's quite a bit of land that they're able to roam and actually keep clean. So that area had grown up in six years and, you know, it's a good spot for them to be. But that's been kind of a fun thing to learn about. I've learned more about goats in three weeks than I ever thought I would, so.
It's a farm bot.
I'm getting there. I'll get there too. So anyway, that just shows you an overview. This is a donation that Farm Credit's already committed to for us. They want to donate $5,000 because they know that we need something to be able to transport animals. So for our students, we're hoping that we can be able to move them from place to, the animals from place to place by using this. And this is something they committed to. You know, they have the check in hand, ready to deliver, but we just need approval for it. So that's one thing. And so that's kind of our anticipated use. We would need to essentially know how we could move forward with purchasing something because it would be a used trailer that we'd be looking at, you know. So that's kind of the considerations. Also thinking about insurance on that trailer and, you know, kind of, we'd probably have to use a personal vehicle to tow unless there was something available from the district level to be able to do that with. So those are some considerations for you. So I'll pause there if you have any questions or thoughts.
Just curious on the transportation needs, what would need to be moved and why?
So we hope to build the animal program. Anytime that, like when we went to pick up the goats and donkey, we borrowed a trailer. So we had to go, you know, borrow from someone, pick it up, use a personal vehicle, go get it, drive it back. And it was just a lot of, you know, just a lot of hassle.
Eventually that goat's going to get towed.
Right, right. So when we take goats to market, when we, you know, we hope to have some show animals at some point, when we go to county fairs or whatever, that would be a way for us to even promote what we have going on with our school logos and, you know, FFA logo and everything else that will be on.
Farm Education Day with the elementary schools, middle schools.
Yep.
Oh, would you transport it?
That would be used.
And advertise.
The surface area there, it's like G on there.
Right, yeah. Well, there's got to be a cardinal on it too.
Yeah. Who owns the actual animals?
So it's, they belong, they belong to our FFA chapter, so.
I mean, I'm just wondering if the, you know, the goat gets out and is out and hits a car and two people in the car die that hit the goat. Who's responsible? The goat, we take the goat to an elementary school and the goat decides to bite a kid's ear off. Who's responsible?
Right.
It's that type of thing. The worst, I want to be prepared for the worst-case scenario because I think this is a great idea, a great concept. So I just, I didn't know who actually was the owner. So, and this is probably a question for Chip and our insurance agent. Where is Chip?
I'm behind you.
Oh, I don't like the lawyer behind me. Chip, I was just wondering, is it, you know, is this something that we can ensure through the FFA chapter? Meaning that we can supplement them to have a million-dollar umbrella for them? So we're insulated as a district from this. Can we limit that risk? It's my only question. I don't think that this in any way prohibits us from doing this. I think this is a very smart consideration. And if we can limit the risk, why not?
Yes, it's something you check with the district's insurance company on. I think most likely would be covered in the district's insurance policy that you might want to confirm that.
Yes, all of our student activities are already covered under our liability insurance. So you are correct, the district will be liable, but we do have insurance.
Do we get the statutory exemption for farm animals in Kentucky? I know there's a statutory exemption for harm done by farm animals or animals used, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, those animals were already owned before I came, so I'm assuming that clause is in there. But I will check, and we are actually getting ready to talk about insurance later on tonight too, so.
It just seems like it's such a great idea and would only get bigger.
Right.
So we'll get you those answers.
Okay.
Any other thoughts, considerations on that? Okay, so there's, the rest of what I'm going to show you is our things that we've not received the money for, but we have applied for. And so I'll kind of go through some of those things with you. The, most of these are through the Kentucky FFA Foundation. They have funds that they put out to FFA chapters for grant processes. And so we've applied for an Ag Achiever grant. We have received one a few years back. We purchased a drone through that grant. But this one is a farm bot. And if you've never seen it, if you imagine kind of like a CNC machine or like a robotic welder or router or something like that that you might have seen before, this is that but for agriculture. And so you put it over a raised bed and it'll actually do all the processes of planting, watering, weeding, all those things. And so we talked about integrating technology in agriculture. This is something that I think is right on the cusp of making some breakthroughs for us. And I think, you know, students being very hands-on with this. The interface board actually looks like a, it looks like Farmville, like the little app that you see on your phone. Like, that's what it looks like.
It'll tell you when the produce is ripe and ready to pick. It's a good flex data on everything.
But if you want to, if you want to reference it, I mean, there's a video in there too, but I won't play it now. But this also includes the purchase of a solar panel and the battery and everything else to run that because it's going to be off the grid. So we'll have like water that'll be in something like this, that'll be processed through the machine. The only thing we have to consider, we're going to be kind of in the rear, like if you see in that photo, we're kind of behind the baseball field in that area. But we can still get Wi-Fi in that area. That's what we need. So that's really the only on-the-grid type of thing we have to have.
That's because, Jesse, the team, tech team, but extenders, I don't know.
Yep.
Outside areas in our schools, so you get Wi-Fi.
So another one, and this is my Photoshop ability here. This looks great. Kids make fun of me for this. But, so the Ag Innovation Grant, this is another one through Kentucky FFA. This is a lot of things. Wes taught me everything I knew about this right here. Now, so anyway, the $10,000 is coming from them. They're, and I haven't received this yet, but it's just a matter of things that we envisioning. And we want to do something like a mobile chicken coop to have back in the back of the property that we can raise chicken for eggs. And actually, you know, we're working with Jessica. We want to actually do that in the school cafeteria yet. And so she thinks that's possible. I think that would be awesome, so. So anyway.
You can bring a dozen to my house.
There you go.
Sell them?
There we go. So. So here's, and there's some other things too. We're wanting to start a fruit orchard that would be on the far, the top side of that map there. Irrigation in the trees, we're estimating a $2,000 cost. And this is all written in that grant. We're wanting to have a space that we can actually have removable panels that we can bring up close to the school if we wanted to bring an animal up to work with our students. We want to have a space that we can confine them. This would just be like for a day thing, to where that would be put out, to where we can work with the animals inside of that pen. So that was another idea. And then there's some fencing needs that we're looking at. That kind of ties in with another project that I'll talk about in a second. But it's, you know, that's another consideration that we're looking at, being able to put up some fencing gates and, you know, have some structures in place for that. This was another grant from Tractor Supply. We were looking at something to be able to move hay, feed, you know, from one place to another without using our trucks and things like that, have an easy access to it. So I've been working with a John Deere dealer. He's got me a price on, you know, a used gator that we could, you know, apply for this grant for. I haven't applied for this one just yet, so kind of in the holding pattern. So that's basically all the grants. This is one that a community sponsor is actually wanting to donate to us, is actually Hoop Barn. And so that's another thing that we're looking at. He's gung-ho, ready to give the money for that. There's just, I think, some processes that have to go through district level, state level, to make that happen because that's going to be a permanent structure. So I just wanted to mention it as a possibility there. And then that would be where that would be located. That's kind of the rear, the cornfield in the back there. That's where the barn is.
I was going to ask about a barn.
Yeah.
Just the barn, not that hoop.
Like a pole barn, you mean?
Yeah, pole barn. Is there a, I asked, is there a possibility?
Of doing a pole barn?
Uh huh.
Anything's possible.
Okay. Well, because if people are interested, because I live in a farming community.
Right.
And, you know, we've got people that would be more than happy to donate things.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, out in the Woodlawn area, I've got a lot of farm.
Essentially tonight, though, we're approving, potentially in two weeks, the $5,000 donation for.
The. The trailer.
The trailer.
That's it.
Can you go back one?
Sure.
So in this, down below, out of frame, is that where the baseball field is?
Yes. Baseball field. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Because there's still then quite a bit of acreage back behind the, starting at the front edge of the crop area going back to the back of the property line, correct?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We're out of all easements in that spot. So we've looked into that too, even the electric line.
Yeah, I wasn't worried about it. I was just kind of curious because there is still quite a few acres on back to that back tree line that we own.
And if you remember, when the land was brought up, it was brought up maybe the possibility of building another school out there.
Or maintenance bus garage back there.
Yes, that, yeah, I want to make sure that it's nowhere around. So you don't have to redo or we don't have to redo or anything.
That was something we were also going to bring up and talk about. I mean, if you look at this, basically all these projects out in this area are, you know, we're kind of away from everything. You know, this area is kind of like, you know, it's where a lot of construction stuff and it's kind of eroded a lot in that area. If you've ever been back there, there's a sewage pump station in that area there. But, you know, we don't use that area. We don't use any of this. But, I mean, there's still quite a bit of space either way.
Even back, yeah, because the blue area is that row crop, which then continues to go back below the frame of the picture there, back to the back property.
Yeah, it covers the fence line and goes kind of in a corner there.
I mean, what you're describing here is equated to Costring Farm back in the day, where you had hands-on agriculture experience. We were a diverse Kentucky student. And lived on Costring his freshman year at UK. So you were living there, you had access to it for a, like, I think you described it as a learning lab.
Yeah, absolutely. And so that's the direction we're hoping to head. I mean, we know that's a big possibility. And there's one more thing. It's just, you know, I'm just mentioning this to you, but we are also, Johnny's going to apply for a grant to go to another case institute for natural resource, for change our pathway at Thomas Nelson for that. And then another final item of consideration is there's space that is on this side of the school proper, the board property, that is just mowed currently. And we were going to bring it up for consideration to possibly use that as crop land. So it's something to consider, you know. It's not a huge rush to understand anything on that, but we know that it would save district resource and it would also help both FFA chapters.
And it would make some, yeah, close buy for the Nelson County students.
Right. So, and you got to keep in mind too, this is all collaborative between both groups, and so.
I think that's our reality is we think the schedules, these Land Lab students may have three hours of time scheduled that they're working in Land Lab as they get older juniors. So that's, that allows us to, for more congestion between schools, for students to spend those larger amounts of time.
Dead hour here for me talking about a Wi-Fi camera out there.
Yeah, so we're looking at buying some cheap Wi-Fi cameras to put up on poles so we can see those animals.
I want to see the farm bot.
Yeah.
I want to get a ping on my phone when the farm bot starts working so I can look at the camera to see what he's doing.
Nice, yeah.
Or she's doing, which her kids doing.
It's doing, yeah.
So we'll get the answer for the insurance in the next probably two, three quarters of days. We'll afford those for review and events in the next.
Any other questions?
Thank you. It's amazing.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Item four is put people first. We have Amy is up, Owens, with the KPC membership agreement. Also, KETS offers of assistance. And again, insurance, RFQ.
Good evening. Good evening. Yeah, you get to have me for a few minutes. Yes, I am. This first one, the KPC membership agreement, we have membership with KPC through GREC, who we are actually members of. And we always sign a GREC agreement. Well, this year, KPC has asked us all to sign a KPC membership agreement as well. This will be done annually in the future. And so this is just to give you the information upfront, to let you know that we're going to be putting it on the consent agenda. It doesn't cost us. The membership's free with our GREC membership. And so just wanted to make you aware of it so that you wouldn't be wondering what it was once you saw the consent agenda. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but it's pretty straightforward.
Just allows us to, if our bidding process will get committed bids.
And we do use those vendors quite often.
Okay.
All right. The next one also is going to be informational. We intend to put this on the consent agenda as well. We've received our KETS offers of assistance. This actually combined the first and second offers. As you know, sometimes those come out separately and we normally have three offers, but right now we have the first two. Once approved after the actual board meeting, I will go ahead and do the transfer of funds into that project and send that information. And then KETS will provide the matching funds that they provide. So that current amount, I believe, was $65,000.
$63,000.
$63,000 change. All right. Oh, yeah, I see it right there. So anyway, just wanting to provide that information to you so that when it comes on the consent agenda in two weeks, that you'll be aware of it.
How's that compared to normal, Jesse? Historically, I didn't see those.
Okay.
It's been set at the same level for about the past three years.
It appeared to me that it was pretty close to what we would have been receiving, so.
I mean, the projection this year is $21 total per average daily attendance, and that's been the same last year, year before, and I think the year before that.
There was one year that was a little bit less.
More than less.
We do have the, we have the strongest board member in the state of Kentucky on KETS.
And because this does provide a lot of the funding that we use to go into like the one-to-one initiative and stuff, Jesse was given all the information so that he can make plans for next year as well. So, so that again.
This is the first year that they've done their, my email too, thank God.
Yes, yes. Normally, when I get a letter, two letters, one goes to the superintendent, one goes to the finance, one goes to the technology, and then you, everybody goes, what am I supposed to do with this? But that will be on the consent agenda at the next board meeting as well. All right. You ready to move on?
Insurance.
Insurance, RFQ. Okay, so it's, we've got to start looking at our insurance for next year. And we have had the same agent for years, and that agent is now retired. And so it is now a good time to start looking at who's going to be the best insurance agent for us in the future. And the way, I've learned a lot of things about insurance in the last several weeks that I didn't know. Apparently, the system is designed to not benefit us. And what happens is if you have one agent that gets a price quote from a company, no other agent can get a price quote from that company. Did you know that? I did not know that. So that really prevents you then at that point from even going, oh, well, maybe this agent would better serve us. So really, we need to do that process before we let anybody get a quote. And so what I'm asking, or what I'm preparing to do is actually to send out a request for qualifications for several agents, to ask them to provide us, basically, what can you provide for our district? What are you going to provide in addition to the insurance that will benefit us? Is it going to cost us anything? What are you providing for free? And we're going to send that out to several agents, get that information back, and then plan for hiring an agent, and then ask them to go get our quotes. So this is an informational thing. I have prepared or provided the RFQ for you. We're not asking you to approve an agent or anything tonight. That would be approved at a later date, most likely in March. But right now, I just wanted you to be aware that I'm starting this process of seeking information on qualifications from agents, so.
I love the idea of having those interested prove their merit will you bring in our district.
Exactly, exactly.
I had to do it all the time, so I'm glad that I'm not the only one.
Well, let's be honest, and we can get so many different things from an agent, and some are going to provide more than others. So let's see what they are going to provide us. I've talked, there's been some that have, they provide safety training and stuff onsite for free as part of the services they provide. Others provide a one-stop shop so that you're not the one sitting there going back and forth trying to make your claims. They do the work for you. So what's going to be the best for our district and who's going to provide us the best service? So I think that that's, it's a good time to start looking. And we need to start doing it early in the year because all of these policies will become effective July 1st.
Okay, so any questions? Okay, now we have a five-day application status policy with Mr. Chase. Okay, now we have a five-based allocation status policy with Mr. Chase in.
So part of the conversation we've been having as a board team over the past seven months has been around community-centered schools. And most recently, we talked about local ownership and the importance of us continuing to think about how we distribute resources locally through a shared vision. Going through this process around allocation is a great example of evaluating the forces of centralized ownership, which is, I would say, here at the central office versus localized at the school level. And this, this nice graphic, Amy and Chase and I talked through it for about 25 minutes today. What is local ownership to us? And how can we communicate that view into our community as we think about this, the nature of community-centered schools? So really, at the end of the day, the goal is still as a district team to empower the lives of our kids and empower the lives of our teachers to make decisions that are gonna lead to them living great lives. Part of our conversation in deep learning is we're doing that by excavating their strengths and opportunities and the gifts that they bring to us as individuals. And that is at the center of all of this work. With that said, as you think about our values and how they play out in local ownership, really this is contingent upon excavating local intelligence, local knowledge, and local leadership. This is also contingent upon focus on student experiences based around a shared vision. Part of that vision is coming to life through the reading we're doing here, the work we're talking about here, and the work that's going on in pride teams and all around our district right now around what's the purpose of it. So we don't, this is localized resources, but they are a product of a shared vision. I'm standing up talking because it's way awkward for me to sit up here and talk.
Sorry, Jim.
Just for the record. So it's also, as we think about the nature of local ownership, it is contingent upon the assumption of local care. Localized care is why you guys are here as board members. You recognize the need in our local communities to provide very intentional thoughtful care, communication, and accountability. That accountability is shared amongst all of us, but it is certainly, this conversation we're having around local resources is very much about local accountability. And lastly, it's about a community of schools. Seeing it as a system of schools working together to share resources equitably so that all students have access. And that is also really this conversation around stewardship. We recognize that what we're gonna be talking about today is a reallocation of funds in many ways from a central location or centralized focus to more of a shared local focus. So this is our conversation that we're having right now with not just the board team, but with all of our teams. How can we as teams work more locally to assert resources and intelligence? So that is the, those are the conditions that we enter into this conversation around allocation. We've all talked about some of these assumptions and it's in many ways about aligning to a shared vision to localized ownership.
Okay, so I'm super excited about this whole process because to me, this is step one in the process that's gonna take us through several more months. And so currently, over the last several months, we've been reviewing what our current allocation is and how we can use those allocations to move and start looking at the district vision and move towards that back. And as we complete this process, that will just basically give us a lead in to start truly looking at our salary tables and our job descriptions. We are doing a lot of work right now in the background, working on making sure that our salary tables align with our job descriptions. So as we move out of February to March, that will be the next step in there. And then as we move into April, there'll be time to start looking at our benefits package and talking to our principals about their Section 6 budgets and how they can best utilize those funds for students. And then that will bring us into May, which, as you know, is the tentative budget. So all this is a step-by-step for me, and I love the whole process. I love the finished product and being able to see the system. And so I'm really excited about it. And I hope you can see how much work and energy's been put in by so many people on the process.
So we know that, as Mr. Bradley said, as part of financial stewardship, part of being dedicated to our community is ensure that if we want to align our resources, we have to do it under assumptions that we've been working from, which really align to our values and what those mean and how those come to life. And so you'll see that each value from, for a long time now, has had a goal attached to it that is a pretty lofty goal. That it's gonna push us, it's gonna force us to rethink how we do school and what that day looks like. And so you'll see that we want all students to have a caretaking experience within their daily schedule that empowers ownership of their schools. So we know that counselors, school counselors play the first line when it comes to those caretaking experiences. And if we expect that of our counselors, we have to make sure that our schools are staffed appropriately for counselors. That's something that we'll talk about in just a second. Student leadership, we set the goal that all students by 2020 will have a student leadership experience. We know that if we're serious about that, we have to have a focus on ensuring that we have people on the ground in our schools that are thinking anew, thinking creatively about what it looks like within each high school and those speeder patterns and how we can bring that to life more fully. We've talked about community-centered curriculum and being able to, the work of the pride teams of bringing that to life about what our students will experience in their day-to-day rituals of school. And we want to ensure that we have instructional leadership that is powerful, that allows us to bring that to life. So that's some other things we'll talk about. You all have already committed last year during the budget process of ensuring that we have people in place to bring this early college and career experiences, that we want all students to have that. So you put the workforce coordinators in each high school, did a reorganization to hire workforce development director to see that come to life. And that's why that's green, because you all have already made that commitment. And then last but not least, and this has been something that we've really been talking about over the last few months with principals, is this commitment to early literacy. We know that by the time a kid gets to the end of second grade, if they're not reading on grade level, all the research in the world says that we're gonna continue playing catch-up. So we have to ensure that when our kids are done with second grade, that we have them reading on grade level. So it's important to allocate resources for those particular things. Throughout this process, as we look to allocate positions, there were a few things that we wanted to talk about. One is that equity is a focus. It will continue to be a focus. We wanted to provide clarity to principals. We began meeting with principals in September, October to really talk about where their school was and what their school needed. And the biggest thing that principals told us was that they needed clarity. They needed clarity in the process. They needed clarity on what these terms and titles and positions meant for them in their building. So that was important. We also knew, and I knew as a former principal, that when you get allocated part-time, quarter-time positions, it makes it really difficult to hire the people that you need because, or you're having to come up with money from other places to hire full-time positions. So we wanted to eliminate that as best as possible. We also looked at grade bands. So if you know, State of Kentucky gives you class sizes for each grade level. And so in the past, we had rounded up based on the total school population. But what's required for kindergarten is different than what's required for fifth grade. So we wanted to look at the grade bands and round up those grade bands so that we could adequately staff kindergarten, we could adequately staff fifth grade, eighth grade, and high schools appropriately. On the classified allocations, once again, we wanted to move away from the part-time allocations to where we could really commit to full-time work. Amy has talked about ensuring we have full-time bookkeepers that are focused on financial stewardship and making sure that we're doing that each and every day. And then our administrative allocations, like we said, we wanted to ensure we had instructional leadership. We want to ensure that we have the people to do caretaking in our buildings. And we want to focus on, once again, the part-time things came up again because we had some of our schools that had part-time instructional coaches, part-time assistant principals. So we really wanted to take care of some of that, ensure that we could put forth the best, best thing possible.
I think a big part of this conversation started in May, too. Much of the work in this community-centered schools vision comes back to the resource allocation. There wasn't, there's really not one thing in this conversation that we haven't, at least as a district team, been thinking about, talking about for the past seven months. We just want to clarify a few of those examples. We're not gonna go into detail about every single position because some of them are relatively straightforward. But the first, as we think about this commitment to safe schools and really creating a space for students to feel cared for, the counseling positions are one of those. So you think, well, we already have those positions. And the difference is now we're saying for every 300 kids in the school, we'll have a counselor, which is essentially a commitment that was not previously stipulated. And this is our commitment to that. So this would increase our counselors' district-wide only by one currently, but it would more formalize that process for us, so. Additionally, this is probably the biggest paradigm shift. When we talk about student leadership, we really talk about classes. We're talking about class offerings. We're talking about choice. Talking about really thinking about the way we use time and space in schools. We're looking at student organizations as well as athletics in the same conversation. So that we're looking at it more holistically about access because we know not every kid's gonna have access to certain things based on their life experiences. We want to continue to build access for kids to have these choices. While also not diluting programs, we want to have core programs where more kids have access to. For example, if you take Beta Club, Beta Club occurs after school in every one of our schools currently. Well, almost every one of our schools went to the state beta. But the only kids that probably went were the kids that could stay after school. That makes sense. So we know that's not, well, we're, if we think about equity and access, that's not the type of model we want to perpetuate. So these are the types of things we think about student leadership. Additionally, as you think about our work around athletics, which we've traditionally seen as separate from school in some sense and not a form of student leadership, for us, we recognize that it is a powerful form of student leadership. And we have to be very intentional about investing in people, programs, partnerships, and the way we celebrate students and honor the work that's going on across our community. So this is where that commitment, this is a role that we have unofficially had. And they've, in some cases in the past, they were allocated to have one extra period and they were called athletic directors. To pull this off was very unreasonable. And this is our commitment to rethinking the way we think about access and equity for kids across K-12. So this is a paradigm shift, but it's a paradigm shift that we feel like the future demands, the future for our kids, the future for our schools, demands us rethink student leadership opportunities. If we think about the work, we're talking about in deep learning and what we've traditionally called instructional coaches in our system. They've been a little different from year to year. So whether we had instructional coaches from one year to the next was tenuous. This is our commitment to sustaining what we see as instructional coaches focused on deep learning through this backpack leader model. So as we talk about building the backpack, these are the people that would really be incubating some of that work across our schools. We've talked a lot about the importance of reading and writing, and that's where the K-2 literacy process comes in. Early childhood, Chase articulated that well. And lastly, before we go into the actual allocation, which is essentially the approval, we've talked a lot about workforce development. And you think about some of the work where we've already invested in, one of the pieces is these beginning to develop pathways. And one thing that I didn't talk to you guys as much about over the past few weeks, we've talked about allocating the Project Lead the Way conversation at the ATC. We've never before paid for an additional position at the Area Technology Center. This allocation does include one teacher at the Area Technology Center that is leading Project Lead the Way engineering programs. So we've talked about this off and on over the past few months, but this is the one, I'd say, additional kind of outlier that we haven't talked as much about. So that one position could potentially be shared with other districts. We'll be in conversations tomorrow about that. And that's really the model that probably would be the long-term model. Regardless, we know we want to offer our kids those opportunities. And Project Lead the Way is a model that we feel very confident in. So that's just some context as you think about where we've been with the community centers discussion and how it connects to some of this work. The next piece is gonna look a little more scientific. Amy will lead that conversation.
One of the things too, that I think is important to mention that you touched on was when we built this, we want this to be a sustainable model. We want this to be something that we can think through over the next three, four, five years that we can commit to, really, as a school district. Because we know that if it's year-to-year type of thing, it's very difficult to bring in really quality people, hire some of the people that we need. So that was important conversation as well. So you...
If I can, so before we get into the scientific part of it, so the numbers, I know that's where, I can see your excitement there.
This is a lot of fun.
I know it is. I'm gonna go first person, too. So as I've read through this and then reflected back on that community vision, I just want to kind of make sure that there's a couple of things that jumped out at me that I'm understanding them right so I can start processing it. One of them had to do with the comment that you just made, Mr. Bradley, about instructional coaches. And you hit the nail on the head that as the ebb and flow of the budget situation in the state occurred, some years we'd have those instructional coaches, and then all of a sudden, there would be cuts in funding, and those instructional coaches would be some of the first to go. And then, well, we'd bring some of them back, and then maybe the next year, some back. Well, then it flowed back down again. So if I'm reading what I saw there and reflecting on it, it sounds like instead of having the uncertainty of a person that is that quote instructional coach, that we're gonna build more so some permanency into looking at our assistant principals and staffing them with the right people to be those coaches. Not that that is their job. They are an assistant principal, but they're also expected to be that instructional leader within the building, too. Is that, am I kind of gathering that?
The instructional leadership model we have is the principals and assistant principals. That's the primary instructional leaders in the building. And the commitment to building a leadership pipeline also means that we're not, we're moving beyond those halftime positions where we're saying to someone that they are an assistant principal, not a half-assed assistant.
Well, and I know we had some discussion, was it last summer, where we were looking at a particular Boston and New Haven that had to do, or maybe even been the year before that, whenever we had the interim superintendent, about part-time assistant principals and trying to figure out how, or halftime or point fours.
Just halftime, yeah.
And we've also always tried to figure out how to build internal capacity of leadership. You know, there's going to come a day whenever Jeremy Hill either goes to something much greater or retires. He may be at Foster Heights for his entire career as a principal. But we've got to make sure that, you know, for those opportunities, that we've got pipelines of strong leaders that we're building. So it sounds like that that's one of those pieces of the puzzle that you're describing there, correct?
We really see this as a three-to-four-year model that we can, that will allow us to recalibrate in three to four years. But the commitments we've made around the goals and changing experiences for students will be a three-to-four-year commitment. And we can't speak intelligently beyond that because what we'll know in three years will be far different than what we know now.
Well, and the other thing, I mean, so many, I mean, you said yourself, I mean, you were a principal at, what school was it?
Caverna.
Okay, at Caverna High School. You know, as the principal of Caverna High School, there's a lot of responsibility that comes along with that. And some of it is the minutia that is painful at times, I'm sure. Having that other full-time assistant principal to be that partner to really be able to have...
Chase didn't have one.
You were in.
That's why I said it.
You were in.
That's where all this gray came in.
I will have to admit, I thought you were much older until I started doing the math one day.
So, I think that's a great example. Chase was a high school principal without an assistant principal.
Yeah.
And that's not sustainable. That's a model, even though there was only 325 kids, something like that.
But who, but who did you have then to be that partner to have discussions with?
It's a part-time counselor.
There you go. Yeah. And that's not to say anything negative about that part-time counselor, because I'm sure they were a strong person. But if you had have had that assistant principal, it was full-time, that the two of you all could have sat down and had conversations and then drew other people into the conversation, would have been an entirely different, we may not have you if that was the case.
And the thing, too, we've had this conversation about, you know, we, Mr. Bradley is very clear with all of us that our expectations are very high, which it should be. And our expectations for the people everywhere in this district are going to increase. We have to. That's part of what we have to do to get better. So as part of that, it's saying we want these full-time positions in these spots and be able to really raise the expectation because we want to say, if you're an assistant principal in our district, we want to prepare you for the principalship. We want you to spend time and get ready for that. It's hard to do as a halftime, part-time.
But you got to have the right to, not just somebody... But you've got to have the right, not just somebody that's got leadership.
Sure.
I want the right people in this division.
Exactly.
The, the other thing that jumped out at me on this too, it had to do with the student leadership piece. And, and comment that you made that athletics, a lot of times we see as being this separate beast. And even some of the extracurricular activities, we kind of see as this separate beast. And something that I, I noticed through the years, especially at Thomas Nelson High School, I'm starting to see it at Nelson County High School. There's a student at Thomas Nelson who I think, her title is Director of Football Operations. She's junior. And the, I believe her end goal is to be in sports physiology or something in that field. Okay, yeah, there you go. You know what I'm talking about. And so looking at the opportunities that she has for leadership, I mean, she is the one that I think she kind of controls those football players.
I'm gonna get ahead of that.
Well, I, I think, I think they probably have a level of respect for her and what she does. And, and this is a student within that school community.
I think the key though is that she has a class where she spends time preparing for the events.
Yes.
And leading communication and getting set up and exploring how they can be event stronger.
And it's part of her learning experience that she has during the day, during the normal day, not the four to six o'clock after-school part of the day. And so that's what I hear that you're saying there is being able to provide students the opportunities, I'm gonna call it during the normal workday. For them, their normal workday being that eight to 3:30ish, give or take. And that would then allow for those students that don't have maybe the luxury of a parent that could come and pick them up at five o'clock from school. They have that chance to truly start developing their leadership and find where their passion is. You know, I start, I'm starting to see students at Nelson County High School that have that leadership opportunity as well during the day, who the teacher just looks at them and says, I know that you can take care of it. And the teacher gets out of the way. So I, I see that that's something that we're, we're, we're trying to do if I'm understanding correctly, is to give those, give students the chance regardless of whether it's athletics, extracurricular, Beta, you mentioned it, during the school day.
That is 100% the goal.
But that's gonna require someone that can end up managing and coordinating all of it.
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna require some, it's gonna require us, when students come into Nelson County Schools in kindergarten, that we're talking with parents and making them aware of all the opportunities that are available. That we're, that we're explaining to them what student leadership opportunities are available in the school day, after the school day, making sure we're communicating them very thoughtfully, collecting data on students to see. And then to, I like those, those things that we are doing and celebrate them because that's how we create more of it.
This isn't someone filling out paper, this is someone engaging with students in their community.
There's not a lot of paper to fill out.
Yeah.
So this next part is really the teacher allocation part. This is where we get into some more detail. You'll see there in the top left-hand corner, those are the state guidelines on class sizes, except for the high school. And the reason high school's a little bit unique is because it is also 31 to 1, but the high school's a little unique in the way high school scheduling works. You have to consider the periods of the day and planning periods that go along with that. It's just a unique animal, you know, it's, you have elective classes that are not just grade-specific and some different things. So when Amy had kind of walked through the calculation portion, which I'm not gonna try to explain that at this point, when she walked through the calculation portion, it's really, in order to assure planning periods are built in there properly, it's really at about a 26 to 1 allocation. You also see on the right-hand side, the Section 7. Section 7 allocations, one of the things the principals said was really important to them was ensuring that they had elective teachers, enough elective teachers to ensure common planning for their staffs. So as we were thinking through that, that was, that was in consideration that we wanted to assure happen. So you'll see there that chart takes into consideration the additional teacher at the Area Technology Center. You'll see that the two high schools were adjusted because of the, really the, the high schools had, they've had some really large class sizes, so we had to adjust that a little bit in order to sure. We also wanted to add, just based on the, just based on what I said, the numbers and the ensuring that teachers were able to have common planning in those schedules, that's what really facilitated the, the number process through here. So that's that portion.
So one of the things we moved away from on this teacher allocation was in previous years, we did something along the lines of, as Chase had said, there was a rounding option, but it grouped everybody together and then we multiplied it by an index to go, okay, well you get an extra one and a half teacher based on your base teachers. This actually provided some clarity for the principals and making it where every school is being allocated at the same way. And, and we did group a couple of bands because technically the state requires, I believe it's 28 per fourth and fifth grade and 29 for sixth grade, but because of the way those bands work, it doesn't make sense to separate those out. So we went with the lower number so that we could, so that that band made sense. And that, what he was talking about was high school with, the state does require 31 to 1, but there's also 150 student instruction hours as the maximum amount that a teacher is supposed to have per day. And so they actually say that if you divide that out by the, an exact six hours, that you would get 25 to 1, but most of the time, with the way our schedules work, we can actually get 26 to 26 and a half to 1, which is why that number is like that.
The numbers there down at the bottom, those numbers are based then upon the Section 4 ratio numbers.
Plus what we provide-
Section 4 and Section 7.
Okay. And then if I remember correctly, Mr. Bradley was talking about the Project Lead the Way, Area Tech Center, that's where the plus 1 in the 1920 school year comes from?
Yes, that's right.
And this does not mean though, that for instance, I'm gonna just pick a school, Boston, while we're saying 17 staff during the 1920 school year, that if they have another funding source, that they may not have an 18th staff member. But these are the number of staff that are being funded by the district based upon the Section 4 and 7.
So one of the things we're in the middle of now, myself, Amy, and Robin Hanloser, is we have one-on-one meeting, well, one-on-three I guess, meetings with each principal individually so that they have a full understanding of this. And really to figure out what, what if we, is there something we missed? Is there something to think through with that? So far, we've met with everyone I said, I think, except Old Kentucky Home and the Nelson County High School. We've got through everybody else. And I think everyone has been very receptive, they understand that, they appreciate the clarity, they appreciate kind of knowing where this is and allows them to plan because our elementary schools and K-8 schools do have the Title I money. And so it allows them to think through and plan a little bit better as part of that process.
Pardon me.
So as we move into classified allocation, one thing that's very interesting is that the state, the only classified position that the state requires us to allocate for site-based councils is actually kindergarten aides and we're required to staff those at a 24 to 1 ratio. You're not actually required to provide school secretaries, I don't know if you know that, but obviously we couldn't do what we do without them. So what you'll see is that we of course continued that 24 to 1 allocation on the elementary and the K through 8. We've also provided an additional instructional aide. And that's because right now, a lot of our schools are being, we are allocating at four and, four, four and a half hours, which is a half-day for a kindergarten, and they're coming up with extra funding to staff an extra, a half hour here and an hour here and two hours here. And as Chase had said, we're really trying to get away from this part-time model. It's very difficult for schools to plan for our children when we're only giving them a part-time allocation. And so we really wanted to focus on that both, not only at the certified level, but at the classified level as well. So each of those kindergarten aides is actually a seven-hour position rather than the four to four and a half hour position.
One of the things too, once again, this is just what the allocation is. So if a school wants to use site-based funds, they want to use Title I funds, they want to use some other things, they can do that to add different positions, and they do. This is just what the, the board specifically is allocating.
And by moving to those full-time positions, it's actually allowing them to use those extra funding sources more efficiently and more purposefully. Secretary positions are not, they're, they're not currently being allocated per a number of students, other than at the elementary level. We've addressed the need that once you get over a certain number of students, you have a whole lot more needs at the secretary level. So we currently have some part-time bookkeepers, some part-time registrars. Because of the state laws that we have to follow, only having somebody there part-time makes it very difficult for us to do what we need to do and make sure that we're complying. And so we've addressed that as well by ensuring that every school has a minimum of two and that the schools that have many more students are staffed appropriately to handle that, that number of students.
So on those, for instance, Bloomfield Elementary School, staffed with two secretary positions, does that then mean that there is no question they will have two secretaries? Or do they have flexibility to where they could say, oh, well, instead of two, we want one and we'll take that money and do it to something else?
So one thing we could do, currently it is in Section 5 and the site-based councils do have some flexibility, but we are telling them that they need a full-time bookkeeper. One of the things that we can do is if, if we, because we're not required to provide staffing for secretaries, we could actually move that to a Section 7. And that's where the board says, hey, we, we need, we see these needs, we are addressing those needs by providing you two secretaries because of the secretaries. So we could do that if we needed to.
And I don't know that I'm necessarily asking for the flexibility as much as, maybe I'm kind of asking whether or not we can ensure that if we see that there is that value that a school-building level decision possibly doesn't have a negative impact, that there's not a full-time bookkeeper, for instance.
I will tell you that not having a full-time bookkeeper does have a negative impact. The state requires the deposits to be made every single day. And you can't make deposits if you don't have somebody to go to the bank.
I would, I would say just in our conversations with principals, that I don't, I don't feel like that they are thinking about trying to cash in or do something like that.
I would agree with Chase on this.
I think, you know, if it becomes an issue, obviously that's something that we can come back and readdress.
They were very excited about the fact that they were finally actually gonna have two committed and be able to separate those out.
I mean, obviously as a board, we value local control as a board. We also need to have the respect and value, the site-based decision-making council and their value of their decisions, but there are certain things that sometimes you think yourself, eh, should that be allowed to happen or not?
And what's currently happening really is that they have these positions, they're just allocated at like 1.3, 1.4, so they're either not coming in all the time or they're funding, we have one, I think one that we found the other day that has about five different revenue streams to fund that full-time, so that, that was part of it. Well, the administrative allocations, that's what we've discussed and what we've talked about.
I think an important point here is the administrative allocation, they're not principals, they're also counselors. And the Nelson County Schools has included LMS positions in this process too. So the, this includes principals, assistant principals, counselor, LMS, as well as instructional coaches in the previous, and now we call them backpack leaders. So as we discussed, the major shift, the major paradigm shift, just to be clear, is moving, is reducing LMS allocation in favor of backpack instructional leadership allocation at the school level. So additionally, the way we're able to manage, the way we're able to pull this off in terms of really allowing instructional leadership to permeate the schools and provide full-time assistant principals, and in some cases like Foster Heights, two assistant principals for the number of kids they have. The way we're able to do that is through the reduction in LMS allocation. We feel from a priority-based lens, that that is going to force us to grow in so many other ways as districts. So that, just to be clear on that conversation.
It also includes at the, the high schools, it's not listed on there, that also includes the workforce development coordinator for each of the high schools, you know, the student leadership position as well.
So one thing I noticed on that one there, that after the 1920 school year, there's a difference of plus 1 total positions as compared to now. I noticed the same thing except plus 5 on teachers. I didn't notice anything on the classified one though.
So classified, we will actually have the same number of secretaries, they will just be full-time on the couple that were part-time. For instructional assistants, it actually results in an additional three, and the reason is, is because currently we're allocating really halftime kindergarten aides and we are correcting that.
Oh, I need to get out of that. Sorry, Carolyn. All right. This last, this is the, so as we, let me go ahead and move on.
So Section 6 allocations are required by the state to be at 3.5% of the base, which puts us at $140 multiplied by your last year's ADA. Couple of years ago in the budget with all the reductions, they actually changed that and said, hey, you can, you can do $100 per student at that time. Several schools have chosen to go that, and I think we did it for a few years as well. This year, we actually committed to the 140 and we are gonna be asking for you to do that again next year, to do that 140. And so what that's based on is projected enrollment, which Jessica Sikolski helped us with, and then projected ADA based on what last year's ADA was. Of course, we are required to give them that tentative allocation. At the end of the second school month, we have to revisit that in case there's been a drastic increase in enrollment to make sure that we've met that needs. I don't, right now, it only looks like it'd be a $5,000 difference than what we're already allocating. So it's not a drastic change. If enrollment drastically increases, of course, that will change, but we are going to be asking when we, when we ask you to approve this next, at the board meeting, we are gonna be asking for the $140 because if we truly ask our principals to, to take that local ownership and be able to plan efficiently, and it's important for them to have the resources to do that, and this is one of the ways that we can do that.
And we'll be, as part of this conversation as well, is, is making sure through March and April, when we have our principals together, that we're very intentional about looking at the vision, what their vision is for how they spend school funds, what things that they want to prioritize within their Section 6 budgets. And also ensuring that the accounting procedures are what Amy needs to be able to be more transparent, more clear with, with those things as well. So that's part of the process during March and April with the principals.
So I know we've thrown out a bunch of information and you guys do have the slides to review. We're happy to answer questions, but we will be asking for approval on this at the February board meeting. After approval, the staffing policy will actually be sent to KDE and that's how do we allocate. And then the tentative allocations will be provided to the principals and that's what they get based on that allocation. So you'll be asked to approve both because they are actually two separate things, and then we will provide those to the, the right people after that.
Because they still have to okay it.
KDE, they just verified that we've met the state-acquired guidelines.
They're actually telling you, okay, you do that.
And what this allows then is during the month of, so let's make assumptions, this is approved, then it allows during the month of March for principals, site-based decision-making councils to already start planning based upon these allocations, which then whenever the April timeframe runs around and notices has to be given.
We've already started talking to principals about what that looks like, providing them resources so that they know everybody. We currently show who's in our building and, and looking at that data. And, and so yes, you're correct, that is, we want to make sure that we provide them plenty of notice and that we're not giving them last minute.
I mean, this has kind of given them an extra month or so compared to years past.
And it also gives us that extra flexibility as we start preparing the salary and job descriptions because one of the major things that we're taking on this year is a revision of our entire job description schedule. And so we really want to make sure that we have the time to properly use this and make sure that every salary that's in our salary schedule that matches a job description, how do you get that salary, and that's very clear. Not only as an employee of this district, but as somebody who's coming to us, they should be able to look at our salary schedule information and know what their job is and know what they're gonna be paid. And so this truly lets us start on that process as well. Can you tell why I'm so excited?
The judgmentary slot too, I think for any of the other, the old, we just talked about, or not approving, not approving this. So those will come to fruition in March after the allocation.
So I think our goal, assuming that we have a working session in March, is that that's what we would be talking about during that time, is that process, that schedule.
What we share in the job descriptions feedback, well in advance, since we have two human resources experts, they'll give us a lot of feedback, three I guess. Jeff, I'm not counting you out. I forgot we had a human resource.
You're geeking out over there, aren't you?
It's a lot of fun. I know, it is. Somebody told- Somebody told me one time that my geek was showing. I said, "I need a chef that says that."
So, really, over the next two weeks, continuing to ask questions, Rebecca asked a couple of questions this morning that were, gave us a lot to think about individually, what are the, what's the implications of these allocations on students' ability to take elective classes in our elementary schools? And that conversation along with, how are we supporting, okay, so we're allocating $140 for students at the school, how are we supporting alignment to the vision and intend to use that funding, which, great question.
I don't think as long as I've been on board, after you, after the money was said, you're going to give $100 first, you know, I recall ever being told how that money was used.
You should be seeing a budget each year. When we pass the tentative budget, that would be at the same time that we would have received budgets from the schools, and it would be in the budget on how they intended to spend those. So, it was probably in the budget.
But we did, well, part of that goal is some clarity for you as well.
That's what I'm saying, it's not that, you read the news.
I think it's a good-
It's a mess.
Right.
So, that would help, you know, do that make sense.
So, I think that's a good example, though, you know, in order for us to grow, that type of conversation amongst the board, for us, your questions will allow us to grow on the problem, because we take certain things for granted when we look at site-based allocations. We need to do that in a more simple way where an outsider decides an implication and be able to do it.
I don't think I've ever been given a budget from a side base.
I think these implications on student, students and opportunities as well, will be something that we'll talk about next month as well when we look at student leadership supplement for stipends and those allocations, what we're allocating to, what we want to, how we want to look at that process. I think that will, that will be part of that conversation as well next month.
I mean, we, I mean, we're responsible for the money being spent, but when you give to a school-
The side base.
The side base is responsible for that. That's what I'm saying, and I don't think I've ever seen a side base.
We will provide them for you.
Thank you. Really, I've attended the meetings when they said, "We're going to do this," but I've never seen anybody like that. We're just relying on side base. Essentially, this is what we're doing, is to rely on side base to do the right thing or to do it the way it should be. Is that not correct?
That is their role.
That's their job.
We have some side base members on this.
I know, that's what I'm saying, but our job is to make sure that money is being spent the way it should be spent.
But you can't be on both, can you, the school board and the side base?
No, you cannot.
No.
We had members that were previously on the side base. It's a nice scaffold, a nice scaffold into the board.
Do this first and then go be on the side base, and then go do this.
Both, either way.
All right.
I need a ball for me.
So, that 1999 Amazon conversation.
Thank you for letting me know.
So, one of the-
You're on another one.
I am, I've got the next two, I believe. So, one of the things is we're required to review the CDE. That's a requirement for every school district in the state of Kentucky. I've tried to simplify it a lot, mostly because the process that KDE now uses for the CDE really is pretty cut and dry. They give you the goals, they give you the parameters in which you can set the priorities for you to use those. But we still want to make sure that as we look at these goals, that they are, the activities that we engage in are part of our larger vision for the school district, which is why I try to simplify the CDE down. So, we are required as a school district to have six goals in those six areas. The schools are required to have five, elementary and middle schools have all of them except graduation rate, and the high schools currently have all of them except for growth. The commissioner just gave a new update on accountability that looks like high schools might have growth, but that'll be a conversation for later. Currently, that's what we have. Those numbers are derived from some calculations from the Kentucky Department of Education. I am not fully aware of how those are calculated, other than I know that they try to look, they have a formula that they look at and say, expected, or not even expected growth, but what kind of growth you should have. Those are big goals. We are currently on the proficiency gap and growth goals. We are around 40 to 50% as a district, depending on the goal. So, we obviously have some things that we need to do, and I'm going to tell you in just a second, some, some things that we plan on doing. For separate academic indicator, we do have some flexibility. You can pick, a separate academic indicator includes social studies, science, or writing. We know that writing is part of literacy, and that's going to continue to be an important thing for us to think about. So, we did look at writing as part of that. Transition readiness is what it has been with the new factors involved. So, it's 87.8%, and then graduation rate is a, it looks at four-year graduation rates and five-year graduation rates. The four-year students that traditionally graduate, five-year students that may not have graduated on time, but they ended up graduating with an extra year, extra few months of support. So, it is basically an average of those two. So, you'll see that that's the 94.1% for this school year. So, the next, really the only other, the second page is really looking at what we plan to do to address each of those things. And I have linked on your all's slide deck, the full CDE, if you want to take a look at it. It kind of gets into maybe some more explanation. And it will obviously be posted on the district website. It's a requirement that we have to do. But really, when you look at proficiency gap and growth, those are focused on reading and math. We know the work of the pride teams, and so, let me back up. The KCWP, the state defines six key core work processes, which are really like six big strategies that you can choose to pick from on what you want to do. So, for those goals in reading and math, it's looking at designing and deploying standards. We know that the work of the pride team is really looking at what experiences do our kids have on a daily basis that is influencing them in reading, math, and across the board. So, the work of the pride teams is definitely a huge component of that. C3 process, we've asked, we've asked principals and their teams, ministry teams, which comes back to why this is important, to be in every classroom every week. We've asked them to engage in coaching conversations every three weeks with their teachers. So, that C3 process, ensuring that teachers are teaching content, curriculum aligned to standards, that's part of that C3 process. And then, we know that backpack days are going to play a huge role for us in our school district as we think about the opportunities to collaborate across schools. We think about sixth-grade English teacher at Boston, working with a sixth-grade English teacher at O'Kentucky Home, and the power that will come from being able to do some of those things through our backpack days and the commitments you all made through the calendar. So, as we look at those three areas, that's really the strategies that align to that. The separate academic indicator is looking at writing, and really, we're looking at how we deliver instruction with writing. That's the key core work process number two. And so, it's really where we look at live writing. That process has begun in our schools. We have, at Foster Heights and then O'Kentucky Home. This coming, next week, we have Bloomfield Elementary and Thomas Nelson. And that's been a really valuable process for us, and we have teachers from all of the same type of schools going in and working with students on writing, giving live feedback right there, and looking at that growth process. It's been really valuable for us to get our head around what our current practices are in writing across the district. The work of the pride teams will obviously touch on writing as well, that can be separated. And then, as we look at Impossible Connect, that's a system where we have had teachers connect with other teachers in their building currently. So, we allocated federal money so that we could get subs for teachers to go observe each other and really look at their practices. And pretty much in every school, writing is a priority, and that's something that they're looking at as part of those Impossible Connect opportunities in each school. The next one was transition readiness. So, we talked about pathways, ensuring we have pathways that kids want to take, that are aligned to what industry needs, and that we are not just asking kids to take a few courses to a pathway, but it is really a whole experience, which is where we looked at adding the engineering, it's where Laura, and we're going to talk about that actually as well, the nursing and some things we're going to do with that, the welding and the opportunities to leave high school with an associate's degree in welding. So, there's a lot of opportunities going on with pathways. We know the workforce development team with Laura, the coordinators in each building, and the work they're doing to ensure that every kid is, has an opportunity to take a pathway that is part of who they are and the experience that they want as a student. And then, the Impossible externships, I think a couple of you all might be going next week to view the externships. That's been a great process. Two of the six days they have completed so far, the next one will be next week. And it's really allowing teachers to see what business and industry needs are, what it looks like, and then they will be coming together this summer to design some really progressive, creative curriculum, curriculum experience for kids that align with some of the things that they have seen as part of this externship process. Our goal is, I think it's within five years, that every teacher in Nelson County Schools will have that experience. So, that's part of the transition readiness process. And then, the last one is graduation, and really what we're looking at is the culture that we build, the environment we build. We know that getting kids to the finish line of graduation is really about caring for them and ensuring they have the support to get to where they need. That's where student leadership is important. There's a lot of kids that because of SDLP, or because of football, or because of whatever, that's what allows them to hang on. We know when we provide more opportunities, that's going to have an impact on that. The C3 process, ensuring, Robin meets with the counselors at every building every three weeks as well. That's a C3 process and ensuring that that is embedded as part of their work in caretaking and getting kids to graduation. And the caretaking experience, we want every kid to have that opportunity during the day. It will look a little bit different, but we have the houses at Thomas Nelson, O'Kentucky Home, New Haven. Boston, I believe, has a family structure. We want kids to have different opportunities to experience caretaking within their day. So, as you look at this, like I said, I've linked the full CDE, it's just more explanatory, but this is really the work that we're doing aligned to our district priorities and how we intend to make progress towards meeting those goals in our CDE.
You, you say that you linked the full CDE. Where is it?
In the board strategic planning.
It's also at the, oh, yeah, it's on the board strategic slide, this is full CDE.
Okay.
Yep. You also, if you-
I was thinking that you were meaning that it was on these, okay.
So, this is linked as well. If you've not seen the new school report card from KDE, it's definitely a different look. That's there, you'll be able to see that, you can. And you can look at a lot of different stats with us and our school district and-
It's more visually appealing.
It is more visually appealing, yes, it is. So-
Just sharing that. Sharing that the full documentation is 11 pages.
It's a lot more words.
Chase's document summarizes that briefly.
So, that's the CDE. You don't believe there's any action required for that, we're just required to talk to you all about that.
So, I just wanted to shout out the Amy and Chase and their work on the reallocation plan. They spent many, many hours making those things come to life, which we call impossible. And they made that happen, and I'm saying, we could talk about this all day long, but if we don't reallocate to make some of these things have potential to come to life, it's fake news. And I think what we're doing tonight, fake news is a great term that is, which we, we're all guilty of creating, we're guilty of creating it. This is a great example of, if we don't allocate towards this, then it's, it is fake. Like, we're, we know that-
It's not successful.
It looks good on a piece of paper, like, "Oh, look at us." But we're not doing anything really to align to that. So, that is the, that's the reality, and Amy and Chase made that happen in a way that I didn't think was as possible this year.
How many fights?
Yeah, a lot of good sessions.
Here's the thing, they were-
I was just wondering, there was more point, but I can't do the numbers anymore.
I normally get to the numbers and then he tries to make sense of it.
It's a good combination.
So, he's your translator.
He's a translator.
They can allocate it from the principal perspective, and it's, it's a, it's a combination.
It's been a really good partnership. It worked.
It's been fantastic, isn't it? The beauty of it is, anyone want me in the room? It's been fantastic.
It's obvious.
So, the next thing, I guess this is-
Is our procedure update, yes.
Yep. So, this is a procedure update, it is not a policy update, so it doesn't require, correct me if I'm wrong, Carla, it just requires us to review this for this first reading. But what this is, is for early entrance to kindergarten. So, this affects five to 12 kids, families in our school district every year that are interested in their child who has not met the age requirement to enter kindergarten to apply for early entry to kindergarten. And what we wanted to do was a few things. One, we needed an appeal process because there had not been one. That's something that is just common sense for processes. We also had to clean up some of the language with the new position, my new position, and some other things. And we also wanted to simplify the point. So, really, what it's, what this says is that if a, if a parent wants to do it, that they have to do, they have to notify us through an application process, which will be posted on our website soon by April 1. That's not changed, that's been the way that it has been in the past. It also says that they must go then, and in April is when our preschool does Dial-4 screen. That assessment is really a, it's a universal screener, and it doesn't just look academically, it looks social, emotional. Are they mature, ready, where are they? It says that they need to score in the 95th percentile in each of those areas. That has also not changed, that has been board procedure for some time. Then, if they meet that requirement, they're able to complete the kindergarten screener for early placement. The kindergarten screener is the Brigance, that is the same assessment our kindergartners give. So, they would take the Brigance screener. And then, where we wanted to get more specific was, if they are ready and/or ready with enrichments, we let them into kindergarten. We don't have to do a notification, if we're saying that they've scored in the 95th percentile and they're kindergarten-ready based on the screener, we let them in. What we also said was, if they were not approved, then they would be able to submit a written appeal to the superintendent stating why they disagreed with that decision. They would need to do that no later than one week after being notified of the denial. And then, we would have an appeals committee made up of myself, the school principal that they want to enter, the preschool teacher, if that's applicable, if they went to our preschool, and a kindergarten teacher as well to look at the kid and say, you know, sometimes a kid might have just missed it by a little bit and they are ready. So, we would sit down, look at the whole child and make that determination from there, and then we would notify them no later than August 1st so that they have time to get into the school. So, you can see in pink the things that were taken out. The G-made assessment is not really an assessment that's given much anymore, which is why we took that out. It's also not real reliable, so that's why that was stricken from that. So, really, this is just to notify you all of board procedure for early entrance to kindergarten.
So, we have a second reading on the, since it's a procedure, it just needs one.
All right. Tiffany, come up.
Yeah, mine's not nearly as interesting as all that. Sorry, guys, not tonight. So, mine also is a procedure update, so this is just letting you guys know where we're at. I think Carla's page 60, if I remember correctly. What?
These aren't nice graphics, these are like 60.
Sorry. And I think it's highlighted, so, maybe. Is that the link in the document? Do what?
I just emerged.
This one?
Yes, yes. Takes a little bit to load, it's like 122 pages. I can talk through it, though. So, really what we want to look at is, for students with IP's, there are federal requirements for that. One of the things that is noted is you have to have measurable, observable goals. That's the only federal requirement. Currently, in our procedure, we have that we also will include benchmarks or short-term objectives when we really only have to monitor the goal, not objectives under the goal. This is just going to give our teachers more flexibility. For students who are currently on alternate assessment, they will be, their teachers will be required to add benchmarks and short-term objectives, as that's also a federal requirement. So, really, I'm going to change this to only students on alternate assessment have to have benchmarks or objectives on their IP.
And this is that much larger document that your first year you helped get put together for us, is that correct?
Revised and updated, yes. Yes. And this is just procedures too, if there's no policy for special teams. And this is just procedures too, if there's no policy for special teams. Any questions? That was your old friend, Steph. Bye.
Filling in for Laura. The next will need a decision, I believe. This is really just an agreement between Nelson County Schools and Signature Healthcare. We currently have 12 students that are going to Signature Healthcare, and they're, basically, they're taking care of all of the training requirements, all that stuff, for our students to be able to get their CNA certification. So, it's not really asking anything of us, it's just an agreement to say that we can do that partnership.
Okay, I need a motion then, to have a Signature Health contract renewed? No, or just beginning?
I think it's to approve the agreement.
Motion to approve the Signature Health contract.
Okay. Damon, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who's seconded?
I did.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay. Mr. Jefferson seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Jesse, fiber lease agreement.
Yes. So, I came to you last year to let you know that we were going to continue our agreement with the City of Bardstown for our, this is our network connections that connect all of our buildings. And that was a one-year contract. So, we put it back out for bid this year, because it's E-rate fundable, so we had to put it out for bid. We got the bids, we would like to continue with the City of Bardstown, but this time we want to do it for five years. This year is the 11th year we've been doing this with the City of Bardstown. They've done great workforce in the past, very reliable network, they do a good job. So, we decided we wanted to sign up for five more years. Well, that puts us over, the amount, the contract amount, the total contract amount puts us over $100,000, so it has to go up to KDE for approval. They consider a fiber contract a lease? You know, it's up for debate, I'm not sure that this is really considered a lease, but they consider it a lease. So, that means we have to get board approval, we have to get board attorney approval, there's a lot of things we have to go through. So, that's why I'm coming to you today, is to get your tentative approval for us to proceed with this. We're going to send it to, it would be pending KDE's approval. So, if I get your tentative approval, I can send this up to KDE, they can rubber stamp it, and we can continue with the City of Bardstown.
What's the benefit to us, to us, to the school district of doing a five-year?
The, the price that we keep getting back, you know, we put it out last year, and then we put it out five years ago, the city has been by far the most competitive on price. If we, if we put it, if we did do, if we continue to do a one-year, we have to, we have to go through this bid process every, every year. That's not the end of the world. It would be something that we could consider.
Most, most telcos, regardless of whether it's the City of Bardstown, AT&amp;T, Windstream, whatever, don't like one-year contracts, because if there is any build costs that they have to do, or network equipment upgrades in their area, not in our district, but in their, they call it lofts, as their COs, if they have to invest any money, they can't recoup it in one year. Or, if they try to recoup it in one year, the price to the customer is in quarter.
I mean, it makes sense to me from, from the City of Bardstown standpoint, I absolutely agree with them. I'm wondering what is our benefit to doing this? I understand, okay, we don't have to do it every year, I mean, it just makes sense, saves time.
Oh, it, it makes it cheaper, because if we were-
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, if we were, that's what I was getting at, is if, if, if a customer, you know, in our case, we're a customer, wants to get just a one-year, or two-years, sometimes even just three-year cost. The telco jacks that price up, because they want to get all of their investment back in it.
Some of the bids that we, we get back will be like, one-year, three-years, five-years, and the price is significantly different if they have to recoup all that build cost in that first year, for sure.
So, they're five-year premiums, obviously, and we're assuming it's less expensive than what they're one-year, this, this time around?
Yes, yeah, this is, this is actually the exact same price, I just looked at it to make sure, but yeah, it's the exact same price that we were paying last year.
On a one-year last year.
Yeah, that didn't make sense to me.
Right, I should mean-
Okay, they, they came down in price from, on this agreement last year.
From the previous year.
Yes, yep. Now, we have the option, during this contract, we have the option, it's, there's some technical challenges to make it happen, but if we could go down to a single fiber per site, we're going down to $290 per site, 290.45, which is, Damon can maybe speak to this, I'm not sure, but, I mean, those numbers are ridiculous for a gig fiber connection between buildings across the county.
It's crazy cheap.
It's, it's unbelievable.
There, I've probably got a half a dozen in other school districts right now that I work with in my paying job, that are doing the same process. They're going to do, you know, bids for five-year fiber contracts, and they're getting prices that are not as low as that 5.29 per month, which are crazy low compared to what they've been paying before.
I mean, I'm just suspicious, why such a good deal?
Because-
What's wrong with it?
Nothing. Because Bardstown Cable already has that infrastructure built there.
They have, they have the infrastructure in place already, they want to keep you.
Well, and that's my thing, they want to keep us, but, so we get into a five-year, and two years from now, there's a new game in town that's so much better, we're locked in for another three years.
Do we have an out?
That's what I want to know, do we have, what's our out here?
I would have to read the exact language of-
I'm just making it hard, I mean, I'm just-
You're fine.
But I want to, I want to know what the out is, what I-
I've already reviewed it, there is no, there is no early termination provision in the contract.
There's no penalty?
No, there's no provision for early termination.
Oh, so we're in, see, we're, we've locked in the five years, so in two years, the next best thing comes along, we're hosed, we're going to keep paying this.
Why wasn't an out written in the contract?
They're not going to give you an out.
Never? Even if it's, even if it's kind of-
The, the telcos, again, what they like to do is, they like to ensure that they've got that consistent financial stream because of the investment they have to make into it. If, if a telco's making an investment of X number of dollars, but they know that you may only want it for six months, they're not going to do that, because it costs them too much on the line that they could end up losing. I mean, I'll tell you, other than Bardstown City Cable, I know Glasgow had a municipal cable company, which has, I don't think has had as much success, or is not as strong as Bardstown City's cable. Owensboro has a municipal city cable, and when I say municipal, I mean it's owned by that local government. Most of the other places, it is Spectrum, AT&amp;T, or Windstream, until you get into Eastern Kentucky, and there you've got the Thacker Grigsby's, and the Mountain Rules, and, I mean, there's 19 telcos in the state, AT&amp;T, Windstream, Sensi being the three biggest ones. I'm telling you, this dollar amount at 5.29, 30 minutes from here I can drive, and they were thrilled to get, I think it was nine-something a month.
The cost is, now, I, this doesn't alleviate any of your concerns, but the cost is an irregulable cost for us at the moment, so we pay 20% of that 5.29.
Which means 160 bucks a month.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, you, you know way more about the night, if you think that we should just run with this, and it is not, you know, too good to be true.
No, it's not, I mean-
We're in the lab year.
Yeah. We're in the lab year of it, so-
Bardstown City Cable has done it for longer than that with Bardstown City Schools. Whenever the E-rate program came into existence in 1998, '99, Bardstown City Schools started taking advantage of it at that time with Bardstown City Cable, and, I mean, they've just continued to upgrade what the city cable has.
And one of the things, you know, is you see that crazy low price, if we could get the technical challenges worked down, going to a single piece of fiber, the reason they're willing to do that is they can resell some of that fiber to other businesses, so it frees up some of their infrastructure that they've got out there.
Right now, we're using two lanes of their highway, and if they can take care of this technical issue, well, we're going to have to use one lane, and then they can sell that second lane to somebody else. So, what, what this one here would be, from what I heard you say, is we would need to do a approval pending KDE's final approval, because legally it has to go through them as well.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
So, then, do we need a motion?
No, we don't vote on that.
Um, there's, there's no- I mean, we have to have a tentative approval on this for it to be sent to KDE.
I'm just going by this little yellow thing that was on. But that's what we did, it's the regular, that's why I did so.
We assumed we were going to do the regular meeting, that's why there was no-
That's what I thought.
Oh, okay.
I didn't realize we-
If we need to change it.
I, I would recommend changing it, and the reason why is because KD's approval process takes two to three weeks. If we wait until the February meeting, which is February 19, two to three weeks gets us to about the second week of March, and the E-rate filing window, the drop dead date, is not too long after that. So, it'd be better, just in case, because I will always say that the state government can move at the speed of molasses at times, just in case something goes slow at KD, we need to have the cushion built in.
Okay, so, do I hear a motion to-
I'll make a motion to approve the fiber lease agreement with the City of Bardstown pending KDE's final approval.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
I will second.
Okay. Ms. Breeding, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Jesse, we appreciate it.
That is a language I cannot speak.
I'm just, those two were rad, I don't know, I didn't realize.
It's a bit late tonight, we're making history here at 7:15. If you guys would like to take seven to 10 minutes and dive into deep learning, we can set the timer and do that. I've found value in that experience. I know Robin McCoy's been waiting the entire time to share a quote with you guys, as well as Jim over here. So, we can set the timer for 10 minutes, dive into deep learning, talk about implications on your beliefs as board members, and really the way we continue to plan the work in Nelson County Schools. So, the way we've done this in the past is really we want to hear something from you as board members, and/or community members, because we, as a district team, already talked too much. So, looking at Chapter 3 or beyond, both, Chapter 3 was the focus, so it's, the question is, what resonates, Damon and I have, if you need it. And those of you that are on the periphery, you can move a chair over here to the group, otherwise it'll be awkward. So, Chapter 3, what resonates?
Come on, Damon, come on, Jeff. We're all in here. What, you want to do, what goodness?
Jesse, we got them right here. All right. So, anything from Chapter 1, 2, or 3?
I'll go first. I was the one last one.
Thank you, Jeff.
I was inspired by Vivian on page 33, who, who focused on the framework of deep learning, as I mentioned last meeting. I was sort of dissatisfied with the vagueness of the initial chapters, and wanted some meat and potatoes and some, some actual processes, and so she especially likes, because she refuses to accept vague assertions, and instead insists on specific designs, and I'm very anxious, I cannot wait to see some results, but I know that takes time. So, the, um, the plan versus the actual was kind of what came to mind. I see that we're focused on planning our future, and then measuring the results, and that goes on, on a day-to-day basis in manufacturing, so it really hit home to me, where we can see the fruits of our work in the district down the road, and as it related to how we planned it.
Thank you, Jeff.
It's not groundbreaking, but-
I'm sorry.
I said, you're a little far too long.
Can I work backwards on, on this, on something that I found? Because I'd like to, I'd like to read something, then add, pose a question. So, and it's along with the same thing that Jeff had brought up there, but it is the indented section on page 34 at the top, where it talks about making the distinction between change and improvement. We increase leaders' responsibility for developing and communicating the detailed logic of how their proposed change will produce the intended improvement. And so, you know, it got me to thinking about the distinction, the difference between change and improvement. And so, I'm kind of curious what other people are thinking about the differences between those two ideas.
That really stood out to me, because in, in my business, change is always assumed to be improvement. And this was one of the first places I think I've ever read it, where, you know, the, having accountability, that it's improvement, and not just change for the second change. So, that really jumped out at me, having, having experienced change that probably did not improve things.
I think that's why it's really important. We have conversations like we did tonight, that it's grounded in values, it's value-driven, you know, and some values that we've committed to the school district, because we can change things for the sake of change, but we have to ensure that if we accomplish those goals, I think we can all agree that that's improvement. And so, that's why that's important, I think, is to ground our work, the work of the pride teachers, in the values. That's what I was looking about.
So, so then, thinking, I'm trying to tell off what you're saying there, then thinking back to that one slide that had the four, or I'm sorry, the five "goes" down the left side, the five, I'll use now the phrase, changes down the right side, two yellow, one green, if I remember right. So, then, we could equate that left side, those "goes" with being the improvements that we want to make, and those actions down the right-hand side being the change that we're making to meet those improvements.
Thirty-six, that layer three, I think speaks to some of that, where it talks about conditions to mobilize, they're calling it deep learning, where it's going to say student experience, can improve student experiences. And it says, five core conditions need to be present at the school, district, and state level, vision, leadership, collaborative cultures, deepening learning, and new measures. I think those are all things that come through in that discussion.
And then, after you get there with page 37, I've circled the talent, lives, and ability and shared purpose, and collaborative expertise to release the powerful mindset that together students, teachers, and families can transform. Because if you don't have, if we don't get teachers and, and students and families to make it work better, it's not going to work better, because there's too many of our students that their parents are not as involved as we wish they could be or would be. And I just think it takes all three to make it work.
We have to be open to a non-traditional definition of family.
Yes.
Family for one student doesn't look like it what they made for the next, meaning that parents may not be their family. And I think that that's hard for some of us to get our mind around, but putting our money where our mouth is on the counselors is going to get us to one of these things. I think it's, in action, the right thing. I seized on that as well, too.
Your grandmother, your aunt, your, your neighbor, your-
Foster parent. For some of these kids, it could be the person that sits next- For some of these kids, it could be the person that sits next to them in the, in their house.
Yes.
At school. But it could be the lunch, the lunch person, we don't know who it is.
The grandparents that are doing their thing, you know. And uncle parents, it's just hard, I mean, you've got to get them all on board, even though it is hard for the older, you know, the older grandparents to be part of it.
It's your best friend's grandmother, it's not even your, anybody related to you.
I think incorporating the teacher now, I saw a quote this morning that said, some teachers went to school today and taught curriculum, some went to school and taught students, and there's a difference. And there is a difference, you know, like that's, old concept around a lot of this stuff is that we're in the business of teaching students, not just content, and that, that might, like what you're speaking about, knowing that about a kid is the difference in engaging that kid and seeing him come to life, or her come to life.
And the importance of relationships when they're coming to our building, gosh, is a changer, and the importance of the house structures, and the family structures, and the Care and Connects, and the Cardinal Cruz, those are structures that build relationships more so than when we have kids that just don't have anyone else to lean on. You know, people talk about those Care and Connect teachers, talk about what it means to really connect with a kid, when even at the younger grade, of talking about shaving, imagine the dad talking about shaving, the teachers, you know, sometime in that position to do that, so.
I wish we would have, if smarter, we would have done this, but I wish we could have recorded the students at OKH the day that the commissioner had his visit, and listening to those kids talk about the house structure, Care and Connect, what it means for them on a daily basis. It's, it's powerful to listen to that, that sense of belonging.
Well, I love what Wes and his team has done, is, and that's one thing I tried to do when I was on board, is listen. Listen to these kids and listen to teachers, and I love it, we're, we're listening now and, and hearing and doing, and holding ourselves accountable, like you said, and just not putting on paper, following through with it. I love that. It's great to invite the news media and hear their input, it's great. Nothing but great things happening right now. Love it. Thank you all.
Well, I, I think the whole premise of this one is it just takes, I know it's a silly thing, but it takes a village. I mean, it takes everybody on board to educate our kids.
I'll say it's not silly. And, and, you know, I mean, maybe we overuse that phrase at times, but, I mean, I'll have Sammy notice that. I feel lucky, I mean, both, both of my kids so far have gone wood, you know, things have worked well for them. And people are saying, well, you all did such a great job, and Lori and I are like, well, you know, there was Mrs. and Mrs. Hell out of Bloomfield Elementary, and, you know, then there was Julia Thomas, whenever she was the counselor at Nelson County High School, Jennifer's freshman year, when she had a meltdown about AP Human Geography. You know, it's all these, it's the parents of friends, like we were saying, you know, it's maybe your best friend in high school that you get to go over to their house a lot because you don't want to go to their, your own house.
The 29 is a good ending quote. That first paragraph says, "The nature of transformation will be fraught with ambiguity accompanied by periods of setbacks, clarity, and breakthroughs, even in those cases where leadership is sound. Be prepared for a journey into the unknown. The only salvation is that doing nothing means that one becomes a pawn in the inevitable change forces that are now occurring in society with greater complexity and speed."
Could you give an example? Because I, I highlighted that, and I said, what is an example of inevitable change?
Technology.
Forces.
It's technology, it's social media, it's Khan Academy, it's the family structure. Think about it, think about it. Gay marriage wants to know, you know, change a, change a tire, go on YouTube, find answers to questions that before you had to go ask a parent, a dad, a person, you know, things like that.
The fantasy of gay marriage, if you think, I mean, before, five, five years ago, if a child had two moms, you didn't have to worry about counseling them through a divorce of two mothers, because those two mothers were never legally married. It was a whole nother issue. Now, we're charged with doing that. So to me, that's one of the, when I read that, that's, that was the first thing that popped in my head was, that is a force that's out there that everyone that deals with kids has to deal with, that's coming, it's, it's here, it's came, it's, there's no stopping it. Who knows what's next?
With the technology, social, the evolution, the, the impact of just everyone having access to things. Look at, you know, Maxxord and UPS, logistics transportation is the job that just.
Well, life changes. Life situations change. I mean.
E-gaming, KHSA essential.
Yes.
Video games.
You're like going to McDonald's and having to speak to a store, and ordering exactly what you want at McDonald's without ever having to speak to anybody.
Yes.
You know, I mean, like, that's the world.
And you can't stop the gays, what they're saying. Okay, on next is our guest comments. Do we have a guest that wants to comment? Do I hear a motion for us to adjourn already?
Motion.
Okay, I hear a motion, second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Adjourn.
Thanks.